Good afternoon, I'd like to now bring the special council meeting for budget purposes to township of Langley to order. And the first item is adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Could I have a motion please, councillor Qualley? And second by councillor Sparrow. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's Kerry. And we move right on to presentations. And we have superintendent Power here from our Langley RCMP detachment. And I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, your worship. Pleasure to be here again. And I apologize for not being available back in 2016 as our schedules didn't align. But on the budget issues, trying to predict what some of the questions might be. I've put some thoughts together, a few numbers for you. And I guess, I guess the initial request I've been asked to address is the need for expansion of the township membership of the RCMP at this point in time. And really what it comes down to is, in simplest terms, is to try to keep pace with the growth of the township, especially up through the Willoughby area, and trying to keep pace with the population increase and keeping a reasonable amount of police officers to respond for calls for service there. And so, did some digesting of numbers, compared it to, you know, the city, compared our township allocation, our township costs, to other detachments in the lower mainland. Big picture of things, we're, all in all, we're, we're in good shape, okay? I'm not a doom and gloomer. When I speak on crime in the city or the township, essentially, we're in good shape there. And violent crime across British Columbia for the last, oh, it's gotta be since 2006, steadily on a downward climb, and that continues into 2016, 2017 now. So that is the good news. All, all major aspects of violent crime continues to drop down. And of course, that, that's a combination of, you know, policing efforts, we'll take our share of the credit on that one, but, you know, societal changes, expectations of community, the media programs. So that's the good news. Over the last 10 years, leading up to about 2014, property crime also took significant drops in, in its occurrences, really significant drops, which, which happened across the country, not just in British Columbia, but it happened across the country. And I did some checking before I came here again, just to see what areas have increased and areas that increased, just random ones, extortion, child pornography has gone up significantly, and that, that's across the province. And I can attest that we see that at our detachment as well. It's become a very prominent type of an investigation for our serious crime unit. So it's, it's one of those interesting things that pops up that you wouldn't expect, but technological advances allow us to detect it, but it also, technological advances also allow the offenders to exploit child pornography. So that's a, a bit of a concern that we have going on. So all in all, crime wise, we, we have to stay on top of what we were doing, and that's with our crime reduction initiatives, which entail, on a basic level, at nighttime, getting the uniformed members and prolific offender teams to be street checking people, staying abreast of who's out on the street, making sure our support units, our, our drug unit, street enforcement unit, prolific offender unit, are actually focused on the criminals instead of the crime type. You can't just sit by a house and hope somebody breaks into it, you actually have to know who the suspect is and go out and target him. So that's what we, we've been focusing on in the RCMP for the last 10 years, and the success is in the numbers, clearly. So, and of course, we adopt that in Langley, and those are methods that we carry on, on a regular basis. So, so our methods are tried and true. I think we did hit the floor on property crime over the last couple of years, because we have seen an uptick across the region, lower mainland and property crime for the last 18 months or so. And Langley's no exception. We were a bit of the shining star in 2015, and early 2014, 2015, and 2016, we started to pay the price for our successes, because you can't sustain the numbers that we were down to. So we've seen an uptick in the property crime. And it's the same old that we talk about all the time, theft from auto, preventable crime is probably the number one crime that we're dealing with, and it's a significant frustration, because it really does frustrate the citizens of our community. And it's hard to point the finger back at the citizens, but that's, it is, when it is preventable, we have to all own that share of it. So having said all that, I did an analysis of the, back to the numbers game, did an analysis of the membership of, of Langley detachment, Langley be city or township, and compared with all the other lower mainland municipalities. And all in all, we're, I think we're in, in good shape, we're in fair shape. I think the, both the township and the city are great partners for the RCMP. Sometimes the envy of some of my colleagues that work in other jurisdictions, because of the relationship that I'm able to have with both, both jurisdictions that, that I oversee. So, question is, you know, do we need an increase? And what my advice to township council would be, really quite simple, is be alive to the growth, and you don't want to get caught behind. You know, know what your numbers are, you know, right now, in 2014, and, and some of the numbers that I have on the screen, which I can scroll across for you as you ask questions, you know, the township in 2014 was one police officer for every 790 people. And that's pretty average to the rest of the lower mainland. And the city is one police officer for every 494 people in 2014. So they have basically two police officers for every one that the township has. It's not a simple argument as, as that. There, there is a number of different issues, you know, the, the township was paying $238 per person, or per capita for a police officer, and the city was paying $371 per capita for a police officer. So they're paying, you know, significant more. And your numbers are in line with the lower mainland district. The city's numbers are higher on the police officer per population, and they're higher on the per capita costing of their citizens for policing. So I think I say that to preface that. Now, why, why would this carry on? Why wouldn't we have more of a stink? There is a, you will see a higher incidence of, of calls for service in the city, because of the density. It is a city core. So, you know, they do get a higher crime severity index scores at the end of the year. They have a, I was surprised our criminal caseload per member for the city, I expected it to be higher, but I thought it would be significantly higher than the rest of the lower mainland, but it's, it's, as of 2015, the township was 57 cases per, per member, and the city was 71. A year ago, it was 67 to 65. So I was surprised it was, it was that close. Now, is the city a, a crime concern for me? Simple answer is no. It's, it's a dense location, it has significant social issues, which we play a part of. And I give an example there. The 14,000 calls for service in the city last year, 1,000 of those were for homeless. Now, the township last year had, what was it, 32,000 calls for service? Sorry, the city was 15,000 calls, and I'll scroll that on the screen for you in a moment here. The township also had 1,000 calls for homelessness last year, which is an interesting observation. Now, that runs up the file count in the city pretty quickly on a, on a relationship basis. But one thing to know about homeless calls, they're not a lot of work, okay? A member shows up, someone moves along, we have a reserve constable that deals with an awful lot of them. So, so they're a social issue, but there's not a lot of follow-up with regards to homeless types of calls. Mental health issues with regards to all sorts of policing in the lower mainland has increased quite significantly over the last number of years, and we're no exception. And we had quite a number of calls and, that have a mental health component to it, okay? So that means the complainant, the suspect, a witness may have a mental health component that we have to deal with. And as a result, the issues that we've discussed before, hospital wait times are a bit of a pressure on our members, because when they, by legislation, take someone to the hospital for an assessment, we cannot release them until the doctor has taken custody of that individual. So the average wait time for Langley is, is over two hours, and that's on an average. It can run high, six or eight hours, or as low as 45 minutes, but the average is over two hours for Langley. And that's a member off the road sitting in the hospital, dealing with that. Just one other thing I'll throw out, we had an interesting year in 2016, we had a 10% increase in our calls for service, which started to catch my attention in the second half of the year, because we get a shift report every 12 hours, and I started to see us quite an increase in calls for service, especially on the day shifts. And as a result, we went from about 43,000 to 48,000 calls for service last year. And that puts us really number three in the lower mainland for calls for service, behind Surrey and Burnaby. And ahead of Coquitlam and Richmond, which I look at Coquitlam and Richmond as similar, they have a lot more members than us, and less calls for service, but they have other issues I'm sure that they deal with. So, so again, all in all, I say, with all the ebbs and the flows, and we're, we're not too bad off, because we'll be high in certain areas, we'll be low in other areas. Now, with regards to what we need going forward, I think at one point in time, I think we have to take a serious look at adding four members, whether it be this year or next year. And those four members would all work in the township. And one of the questions I get, I guess, get asked periodically, or quite often, is, you know, the impact of the membership's duties within the township or the city. Our general duty members where we, where we're adding these members to are zone police. So the, the city members, they're assigned to the city, they work in the city, they respond to calls in the city. Of course, if there's an emergency that's gonna cross the border, they're gonna cross the border. That goes without saying, Surrey would cross the line to come and help us, just as we would cross the line to go help them. So, you know, what you're looking at is, you know, 90% of the time, the members are working in their zones. The support units work at a pretty much the same ratio, about a 75-25% of their time, 75% of their time in the township, 25 in the city. And I had them give me a, a summary of their targets over the last year, and this is what we're talking about, the street enforcement unit, look at property crime offenders, the drug unit, and the prolific offender team, where did they do their work? And they didn't know what the, why I was asking the question, but it was interesting that, that the, their efforts came back to about a 70-30, 75-25 cut. But a lot of their work crossed the boundary. The drug unit would see a lot of hand-to-hand trafficking, which is the starting point for their investigations in the city, but then they would find out that the stash house is in the township, or possibly even in Surrey. Okay? So, so there's a lot of cross-boundary activities that do go on, and the same thing with property crime. You get a lot of, you know, we had the issues in South Otter that we dealt with, there was a couple of problem residents out there, and again, we dealt with those. So I think the, if there is a concern about fairness with the city and the township, I think we have a very good thing right now. I think the relationship is excellent. I think, I don't think anybody's getting the short end of the stick, but in, with all due respect to your worship and council, I think we want to be alive to the growth within the township, so we don't fall behind, because that's when problems do start to happen. So, sort of ran on, on a number of different topics there, and I throw it back to you, to yourself for anything.
Good. Well, thank you very much. I'll leave it up to council if they have any questions. So just, I just wanted to clear, get clear, you said the calls for service for the city were about 15,000, and is that for 2015 or 2016? You're, there, okay, there we go, I saw, I wanted to see.
So that's all, that's all 2016 numbers. And from these numbers, you know, the only caveat I have to put in, everything after 2014 did not come from the provincial website. So the populations, the member strength in '06 and 2015 are all off the website. And then the increases, I got ahold of the detachment commander, so some of them may not be on there, but the final numbers of their book resources I got from the OICs of the detachments.
So ours is 32,000 in 2016?
That's correct.
That's calls for service?
Calls for service, that's right.
Whatever it is, barking dog to homicide.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Councillor Arneson and Long. Councillor Arneson?
Yes, thank you very much. I, I hope you don't mind, my questions, I guess, are somewhat tangential to this, but I had a couple of things that came to my mind. So you mentioned four members having general duty sometime in the future, and sort of an idea about a formula. So my first question is, what's the time lag between when we identified the need and when they could be procured realistically?
Actually, on the road, about 18 months.
Okay. My secondary question then is about act teams, and whether or not this would be something that we, I know we've talked about it a lot, in terms of community mental health issues, and, and the need to kind of triage that way. So is that something that you would foresee, perhaps?
It's something that we've definitely been lobbying for, if we're, if we're allowed to lobby, but we have been very vocal in the need for an act team in, in the Langleys. Did my research with Vancouver and Surrey, and, and the results are just phenomenal, they really do speak for themselves. So an act team, or something like an act team, is definitely a need. We've already committed a member to, as a mental health liaison for the Langleys, Constable Jason, Justin Guile. And he works, he would basically be the resource that we would contribute to an act team. So we're sort of already in, and he liaises with local professionals to help get our, our citizens in need, the help they require as soon as possible.
Okay, well, that sounds promising. And just a final question about our bait car program, the one that we have in Willoughby. Does that circulate anywhere else in the township of Langley? Is it an issue in the same way?
Well, the bait car program, it's, it's based on the analysis from our analysts, obviously. And so we look for the hotspot where, where activity's happening, is, has something popped up in that particular area? And we also use it for theft from auto investigations as well. And so if we get a high incidence of theft from auto, we will target that area. So it's, it's all statistically and strategically driven, and it can go anywhere in the Langley area.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councillor Long?
Thanks, your worship, and thank you, Chief, for your presentation. There's a couple of questions. First of all, on this, on the chart that we're looking at then, it has the number three there, so that's the three we've had in 2015 and 16? Or is it the three we're asking for?
No, that's the three that were previously committed.
Okay, all right.
And exist, those positions now exist. And just, if I could just explain, when I say 18 months, why, why does it take so long? What happens is the township, and feel free to step in if I mess up this, but the township sends a letter to the provincial government, who sends a letter to the federal government, who then, once they approve it, send the letter back to the provincial government, who in turn sends it back to the provincial government. And then we get it off to the RCMP to actually get the staffing action, create the position. So I think you can envision why it takes 18 months to get the body on the road.
So, and then the current budget, as it sits now, and maybe staff can, can remind us, doesn't, doesn't include any extras for 2017?
No.
It does?
No.
Yes, it does not. Well done, yes. See, it's not.
No, it does.
Now, we had a community patrol program years ago, and I know we talked a little bit earlier before the meeting started about the auxiliary programs and stuff, but is there any hope that that might come back? This is where we had one or two officers, although they weren't armed, I guess, and they were, I don't know if they were auxiliaries, they were called something else.
It was a community officer?
Safety officers?
Yes, yeah, I think that was a community after officer. Short answer is no, that won't be coming back.
And mainly because of the auxiliary program and all the other events that have happened, it's, that's likely never gonna come back.
That's correct.
In other words, just a, just a sort of a topical thing that they've come up with, these darts now that we, they shoot onto cars instead of pursuing them, is that something that Langley's gonna have access to as well?
Yeah, well, well, we don't have it right now. I know Delta was, I heard about, about six months ago at a presentation where Delta had come across, and they were gonna go out and acquire this technology, so it was pretty exciting when I heard about it. And we will definitely, something, that's something the RCMP in the lower mainland would research on our behalf, and develop all the policies, and if it's a good bang for the buck, and it works for us operationally, then that's something that they will pursue.
And then finally, just to, just to ask you, so you're here, the, the building in Murrayville, I know that there was plans to expand it over the many, many years, and nothing ever happened, how we fix space-wise now, just coping, I guess, huh?
Right now, we're doing pretty good. We, we have to shift our, how we do business depending on, on crime, and, and I'll try to explain, hopefully this makes a little bit of sense here, we had 18 members in our serious crime unit, okay, which is a sergeant, or two sergeants, four corporals, and whatever the rest are, and constables. So that's two, two nine-member teams. The work that they did, the shootings, the attempted murders, because I hit would take care of the murders, started to dwindle, and over the last few years, and as I mentioned earlier, that's why I mentioned child porn, pornography investigations became, jeez, a significant chunk of their work, and it's, it's all internet-based investigations, and then search warrants on the residences were, that have been identified. Where the pressure was coming was on the frontline responses, and it's a shot fired call, more, more significant domestic violence investigation, an assault that is significant but solvable in the first instance. And so, instead of calling out a serious crime team, what we've done is we've shifted one of the serious crime teams, and we've spread out the resources on the watches. So the watches have your uniformed component of about 18 members working it every time. But every watch now has a four-member plainclothes contingent working with it every single shift. So we've spread our plainclothes contingent to work 24/7 now, which gives us better, more fulsome responses on the front end, and then they're dealt with quickly, they don't drag on for extra days. So the, and why that's efficient with regards to the space is because they can all share the same office, okay? So we've actually freed up half of our serious crime room, and, which is why we're gonna bring our drug unit back to the detachment from this building.
Well, thanks. Thank you very much. Thanks. Any other questions, council? Oh, councillor Qualley?
Thanks for the presentation. You said, I think earlier, excuse me, last year, you saw a significant increase in daytime calls for service in the township. What are those related to?
Pretty much everything. It's, you have to bear in mind, if crime happens at night, they report it in the daytime, okay? So, so that's why we try to be out there at nighttime to prevent that from happening. But my whole adage, if people are awake, they decide they wanna call the police. So it can be everything from, as his worship says, from a barking dog to, you know, unfortunately, you know, a body in the ditch type of a situation. So it's, it's just people being awake. And more people are awake, more people are interacting, so you have more conflict, that's where you have assaults. It's daytime calls are, if we get 100 in the daytime, we'd get 40 at nighttime, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and then 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So that's kind of the ratio of how they would roll in.
Are there, I wonder, is there a significant number of problem calls, or nuisance calls, I guess you would call them?
We watch for that. What, what we do is, not included in this, is a bulk file system where state fireworks during Halloween season, okay? You bulk file those, because we're not responding to them all. So they just go into one file. So that's just, one file's created just to store the information that comes in with regards to that. So, so we do have processes in place for what would be high volume, what might be deemed nuisance phone call, or nuisance calls for service, that there's not much that we can do about, so. But there's nothing that stands out that, you know, that we can do much about that is a real problem. If we did have a nuisance issue, we would probably use like our community liaison officers and start to target it, and try to make the problem go away. But no, it's pretty widespread, all sorts of calls, and I think that sort of triggers one other worthwhile piece of awareness, and it comes from the, well, you know, you go back to the Pickton Inquiry, and missing and murdered women, which is happening nationally, significant requirement was put on all the provinces to come up with more accountability with regards to missing persons investigations. So as a result, the province of British Columbia has enacted new legislation with regards to missing persons investigation, which, which are quite significant with regards to the expectations of the membership, but fair at the same time, because what we're, what we don't want to do is have people fall through the cracks and get forgotten with regards to an investigation. So we have a very robust system in place in Langley, as every detachment does, everybody has to have a designated missing person coordinator to make sure that investigations that are of concern are properly investigated. Then we have a two-tiered level of oversight with regards to day-to-day missings. Now, a legitimate missing person, in 2016, there was two. One turned up unfortunately deceased, and the other we did find. However, we've probably dealt with several hundred missing person investigations through the year. Half of those would come down to two or three people that are chronic missings, okay? So if you, and I don't wanna use the term nuisance, but the chronic missing persons complaints, they get passed on from shift to shift, and they are a high risk, because it's usually young teenage girls that will not return to their group home. And they're out, and the, the challenge is, even if we went out and found them, you can't physically grab them unless they come voluntarily. So we're in contact with one that's been missing multiple times since Christmas. The only time they're not missing is when they return to their group home, then they leave again, and start a new file with a new missing person. But we've been in touch with her, and she just makes it crystal clear she's not coming back to her group home. But we own that risk in the interim, and it's, every morning I wake up and I see her name still on the missing list, it's, it's an anxious morning.
Thank you.
Councillor Whitmarsh?
Yes, thank you. I'm just looking at the cost per capita column, and just as a comparative, noticing, you know, Richmond at 209, and Coquitlam in the 200 range per capita, and then the township here at 238. And just, you know, we're certainly, it seems like we're higher than most of them. I know there's some down there that obviously may be a bit higher. What I'm wondering about is, is what, what kind of strategies do you, are used to try and adjust the cost per capita? I mean, I, you know, is it just to, if we reduce crime, it, it helps, or if we, you know, because if we obviously hire more officers, our cost per capita actually goes up, not down. And so, you know, the, the difference between us at a per capita head, say some to Richmond or Coquitlam, if we had their levels of cost per capita, we would have about a three-and-a-half million dollar savings, which is quite significant. So I, I know that it's easy to draw that just in a, in a diagram or a chart and comparative, so I'm, I'm not suggesting we need to be at their levels, but I'm just wondering what we do to try and decrease those costs per capita, so that our expenses are less? And, and I know that's maybe a big question, but I'm just wondering what, what sort of approaches are taken, or is that really a, a concern, that the cost per capita, is that really a concern for us?
I've never, I've never seen a, a plan that would try to address that specific number, because I guess there's so many factors that would go into it. Obviously, addressing crime trends is something that whatever, every community would want to look at, but I've never looked at, I've never seen a plan that tried to address that. So when I, when I present this, this is the interesting thing about this, and remember, my summary of it is, I think we're good, okay? Because it was once described to me that you can do what you need to do in Langley, where other places can do what they wanna do. And there, there's hazards with the wannado groups, because I like everybody to be fully engaged, right, right to the proper level, not over, but just fully engaged, no idle time on their hands. So how do we get those numbers down? I'm gonna have to digest that one, I just don't think I can pull an answer out of, out of my head at this point in time.
Yeah, no, I, I, I guess I recognize it's a challenging question, and when I look at the, you know, the numbers of, 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 of officers that we have per population, ours is also, you know, lower, like Coquitlam, 871, we're at 790, Richmond's 933, so there's quite a bit difference. And I, is that just based on that different areas have different types of crime, and because they have different types of crime, they require more officers to manage that crime? Is there, I, I'm just trying to get a sense of that, it's certainly not, I don't have any experience in it, so I'm trying to get a sense of what is normal, and, and I mean, certainly the Langley city, 494, I mean, that, you know, is a very, you know, concentrated number of, concentrated number of officers in, in a region compared to most of the other areas that we're seeing here.
Yeah, and I look at, just looking at the screen there, you know, we look at Richmond, as you mentioned, so they have 200,000 people, and 240 members, or 235 members. Now, the cost per capita is back to 2014, and they've had an increase of 23, so that, the cost per capita is 2014 range, so I'm not sure what that changes with the increase in membership, but their population could also go up in the last two years at the same time. So it's, let's assume it's relatively close. So it's, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's our geography of where we're located with regards to, you know, just the pressures on, on the crime trends around here with the growth in the south side of the river, but, you know, it's, it's a lot of people in, in Richmond, and it's, yeah, it's gonna take some digesting to try to figure out the real drivers.
Okay, it's, yeah, I, I appreciate the challenge, because I, I think as a council, we wanna ensure that, you know, we're getting, for the money we spend, we're getting the right coverage, and we're not sort of spending more than we need to, but we're certainly making sure we spend adequately. And so it's, I know it's hard to compare from one to another in a, in a chart like this, because it's a bit of apples and oranges, but I think they're just important things to sort of digest and think through.
Yeah, and I think that's, one of, one of the purposes of, of this chart is to just show, there's so many different ways to look at it. So, you know, you have to, after all that, get back to what you're comfortable with. And we're not, we're not crime-ridden, which is, which is good news, I'd be the first one to tell you that. And we're not, we're not crime-ridden, which is, which is good news, I'd be the first one to tell you that. So, which is why I sit here and say we're in good shape. I think you've got a very good partner on the other side over there in the city, and I think you've got a standing detachment. You have great membership that that serve the community well, so so we're not in too bad a shape. And but again, just being alive to our growth and, because I don't have a real sense of what the actual numbers are of in the township at this point in time, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Counsel Fox?
Yeah, sorry I'm late. I was on a telephone conference, Metro Vancouver. Anyway, my only question would be following up, I think, from Counsel Whitmarsh's question. In in certain circumstances, and I think we experienced this recently, where the issue of crime in South Langley became, in the Otter region of South Langley, became an issue. And where, do we have enough manpower to deal with unique situations would may and do arise in circumstances such as that, to deal with, and I'll use the word hot housing that area for a period of time? That's establishing programs like Rural Block Watch, that's working with the community on a regular, ongoing basis with meetings, updating patrols, more patrols, more obvious, more of an obvious presence in the area, and so on and so forth. Do we have enough to deal with specialty circumstances? Next week or next month, it may be another issue in another area of the community. And, you know, these, these happen, and so.
Yeah, they do happen. I think there's probably a better example than South Otter for a variety of reasons, but we had, early in the year, we had the quote-unquote treatment houses, four or five that opened up in the township area, and and the the crime around there, like it was, you didn't need an analytical degree to figure out, you know, what was happening about it. So that was all hands on deck. It was the drug unit, the prolific offender unit, street enforcement unit, community liaison officer, the general duty members. It was, it was a detachment project to target this area, to prevent further crime, really make everybody that was criminally active uncomfortable, and work with township bylaws to address the unlawful nature of the operation that was going on at that, in those different houses. And collectively, we were able to do it. That was probably the most significant one that we dealt with. So we were able to deal with that, and it was really quite significant, because you're looking at multiple locations and sensitive issues at the same time, because we are very supportive of all treatment, you know, that is the number one thing that's required, but let's make sure that it is treatment that is going on, and that's what we wanted to kind of stick our nose in, and if they're going to do that, do it properly based upon the bylaws of a community, which, you know, obviously they weren't. So so we were able to do that. I think that's a good example to say, to answer your question and say, yes, we can. You know, we watch for, I'm always try to be forward-looking to what could go wrong. You know, I watch what goes on in Surrey. If a, if a shooting situation started, could we deal with it? We'd be pressed, but don't forget, we're with the integrated efforts of the Lower Mainland, we got into a shooting situation like Surrey had to work through. CFSU is part of, you know, policing in the Lower Mainland that we would have access to along with other support units. So it's, nobody's left on their own when things go sideways, and if it gets out of our control, we do have those remedies. But to keep extra bodies on hand, I wouldn't be comfortable with it, because I really don't wanna sit here and try and defend members that are not fully engaged. I, as I said, I'm trying to hit that that sweet spot where everybody's fully engaged, and that's where we're at right now. Not overrun, but definitely fully engaged, so, yeah, I think we're in pretty good shape there.
Thank you.
Thanks. I see your statistics are all RCMP detachments.
That's correct.
Through the Lower Mainland, and the comparison, do you have any sense of what the comparisons cost for the municipal forces, such as Delta or Abbotsford?
Yes, I do. Filibuster for a couple of seconds, I'll just turn to that page.
Alright, talk about the weather. No. It's non-emergency, good time.
Okay, there's not many of them. I'll just give you a couple of Abbotsford Police, which is a good comparator. They're paying three hundred and eight cost per capita. Delta, three hundred and thirty-four cost per capita. New Westminster, three hundred and forty-one. Port Moody, two hundred and ninety-six. Vancouver City, four hundred and sixty dollars per capita. Boy, you guys are getting a deal. And Victoria, four fifty-one. And that's on the, on the website where all these things are, so.
Yeah, and part of that is they're large urban centers with a lot of business and night activity, so their population, but they're getting a bigger tax base off of.
Yeah, they don't have the ten percent federal.
Yeah, yeah, they don't have that either, yeah. Interesting. The other question is, you know, looking at the numbers here, we've gone from in two thousand six hundred and twenty-three to now one forty-one, so my math, that's an increase of, what, eighteen, eighteen members? Over twenty years, pretty much.
Ten years.
Or ten years, sorry.
Six to fifteen.
Yeah, so eighteen over ten years. The, so ten years ago, the the time on a call as compared to today, like is there, you mentioned something on the missing, there's been more regulation, I'm sure it takes more time to investigate. So have you seen an overall increase in time that a member spends on a call? That, just based on legislative changes and policies and procedures, that's sort of takes people away from.
Yes, definitely, and and thank you for that question. I was speaking with Chris Kennedy, the officer in charge of North Vancouver. Actually, I spoke with them all, but they completed their General Duty Staffing Analysis Committee study, which we're in the midst of doing here right now, and that search to address, and what we're gonna do is come to you folks and present this to you, and it'll, and it'll discuss the changes in policing and the, how much time is required for different types of investigations. And I think domestic violence, for example, what used to take us an hour now takes us, you know, about eight hours to complete on a basic level. Missing persons wasn't even on the radar before. When we brought in the, one of the biggest drivers in the township is traffic enforcement, okay? You know, the township gets, you know, twenty-seven hundred investigations for traffic enforcement in twenty fourteen compared to six hundred and nine for the city. So, and that's to be expected, you know, you have a lot of roads. But where I'm going with that is, the old impaired investigations seem to come off the table with the introduction of the immediate roadside prohibition. Well, as those have been appealed and the work goes on, we've gotten to a point where the roadside prohibition is as much work as a full-blown impaired investigation. And an impaired investigation, you bring them back, they gotta blow, and that process alone, just the physical process of blowing in the machine twice takes at least an hour. If you have a slow lawyer, it can take a couple hours, so. So even something that was quicker is now slower. But that's, you know, a lot of it's on the accountability piece. Why do they change accountability? It's expectation of society, it's not our choice, but it's expectation of society, and their fair expectations is that we have to be alive to preventing repetitive situations. Domestics is a great one. We have, it actually was developed in Langley, there's seventeen steps that we assess for a domestic violence investigation, just regard, in regard to the the involved victims' personal safety. We go through seventeen different steps, engagement with them, and it's, and queries and assessments to determine if if they're gonna be safe after this incident has taken place. So that obviously takes some time, but it's it's great value, because we're trying to prevent the repeat offense down the road, which is the greatest tragedy. So so to do that, to do our job better, it takes a lot more time. Then as you're, you know, may or may not be aware of the introduction of the Prime Records Management System, that was a bit of a game changer. It was, really, it's like going from, you know, a pencil to a computer. That's really the change. Our old system, which was called PERS, was so antiquated to change over in, you know, six or seven, I think it was, was was huge, but the difference is, the data input required by the frontline members, municipal and RCMP was significant, so the learning curve was steep. The good news is the new generation are so fast, they can do it without thinking, and they knew, they don't know anything better, so they just do it, but it still takes time, even if you're quite adept at data inputting. They're on the road, they're working on their computer, and I'm quite surprised at how much detail is required. However, at the end of the day, when we do a query search on Prime, the record management system, we get a lot more quality information than we would have in the old days. And so, but, you know, garbage in, garbage out, well, value in, value out, but value takes time. So to answer your question, your worship, yeah, I think the increase in administrative time is up around thirty percent. But when we come with the General Duty SAC presentation to you folks with Mr. Bell Mew and his team, you'll have some say in what you want, and I'll give you an example. The standard response time for emergency calls is seven minutes, so, you know, he can explain where that number comes from. So if it's a seven-minute expectation, they take all the data from Langley and the geography, and we're trying to separate the city and the township in this exercise, which is why it's taking longer. And the whole purpose is to determine, do we have enough members on the road? This is just about on-road resources. Do we have enough members on the road to respond to emergency calls within seven minutes? And that's the bar that we're trying to meet. If you want a faster response time, he'll show you. To get down to six or five minutes, you'd almost have to double your complement of members. It's really quite phenomenal how it all pans out at the end of the day. Having said that, if you're comfortable with an eight-minute response time, because we look at the semi-ruin nature of parts of Langley, we can discuss that and factor it in. The other piece that you get to factor in, as as the folks paying for the service, is how much proactive time would you like the uniform members to have on their shift? And based upon all the data input we get from our members' activities, and when, and that's all, they go to a call, they hit boom at the call. When they're finished a call, they hit a button, says they're done at the call, and they're on patrol, they're doing proactive stuff, so everything that they do, we've been hammering it into them, you know, keep on the data set, and it's all scored, and so we have a very good idea of what everybody's doing. So if you want ten percent proactive time, then we factor that into the equation, and then we come up with a, basically a number of how many members that are required. It's the same process that Surrey used, it doesn't mean you're gonna be on the hook for a hundred members, so don't, don't panic there. I think we're gonna be relatively okay, but that is coming soon, and I've been in touch with them as recently as last week to see where we're at with that process. So it's, it's very informative, but that's a long answer to.
Sure, short question. It's like, the more police you have on the road, the more crime you'll have? Because there's more detection?
Yes.
Kind of feeds itself as it moves along, so that's, that's quite interesting.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Or just one more thing, a little time, the homeless, you mentioned a thousand calls just for homeless issues. What type of issues are you being, are you responding to?
It's, a lot of it is just people in spots that bother other people, the ones that we're, we're, yeah, we're concerned about the business owners, you know, ability to run their commerce, that's, that's only fair. We will get calls of, you know, people just don't like the sight of it, and at a given location. Sometimes there's calls for concern, you know, the well-being, so we'll check on that as well, so. But the business ones are the ones that we, especially during business hours, that we try to jump on right away.
Somebody in front of their door, the back.
Exactly.
Okay, great, thanks. Counsel Qualley?
Just in regards to that, I called recently, there was a tent, a camp set up behind my business, just behind the hall here, and they weren't actually sleeping in the camp. They were using it as a location to store their merchandise while they went out and, you know, circulated the neighborhood, and so I called RCMP and they responded, thank you. They checked on it a couple of times, but eventually called bylaws, and, I mean, it was on private property, and in fairness, my staff were afraid to go out there after dark to take out the garbage and do other things. And so I wonder if the homelessness thing, I mean, I get there's people sleeping in these camps, but I wonder how many of the camps are actually just storage facilities and not actually housing people, but rather just a place for them to keep their stuff while they're out doing other things?
Legitimate stuff or illegitimate?
Illegitimate stuff.
That's what I thought. It's, I've been to a few of the camps, and to be quite honest, if you look at what they've got, I think they're doing most people a favor. It's not, you know, you don't see a lot of high-end quality stuff in any camps. I think if they had anything of value, it's, it's coming on fairly quickly, and we're always, it's always trepidation in any public forum that you tie significant crime to the homeless issue, because there are so many other factors that go in there. There is a component of crime that is tied in the homelessness, and there is, you know, a growing component of policing requirement to tent homelessness that is, that is, that is present at this point in time. But, but yeah, the, between the bylaws and our community liaison officers and in the township, there's, they have the weekly, they go together every week and check these places out. So so I, we're in there fairly regularly. You know, what you're suggesting is not at all impossible, and stuff comes from somewhere. So there is some illegitimate stuff in there, no doubt, but then trying to identify it, that's, that gets to be the hard part, so.
Yeah, well, no one was actually sleeping onsite, I don't think, or they may have been during the day, but not overnight. There was just a, it was a storage facility.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, I think that's all the questions. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Always enlightening, and appreciate that, thank you. Alright, so at this point, I need a motion to receive the presentation. Counsel Qualley and Counsel Davis, just a show of hands, all those in favor, receipt, opposed, and that's been carried. Is there any other business? Seeing none, Counsel Long moves termination, Counsel Davis second, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Thank you.